Call to order, Sunshine Law, the Runnymede Board of Education meeting is called to order. The Board of Education is in compliance with Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975, entitled the Open Public Meetings Act. The time, date, and location of this meeting was appropriately advertised by notifying the retrospect as well as hosting hosts in the Borough Hall, the Runnymede Post Office, Mary Bulb School, A-line Kingdom School, Grace Downing School, and the Runnymede Public School District website. Please rise and recite the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Borough Hall. Patricia Derris here. Charles Mottine. Maria Panzarella. Here. Samantha Spalding-Gazza. John Ward. Here. Amy Beatty. Here. Naomi Davidson. Here. Patricia Smith. Here. Lynn Terrell-Jackson. Seven. Present. Two absent. Also present, Dr. Nancy Ward, Superintendent of Schools, Joanne Augustine, our School Business Administrator, Craig Gallagher, Principal of Bingham and Downing Schools, Mr. Mark Iannucci, Principal of Mary Bulb School, Jan Fiola, Child Setting and Teaching Coordinator, and Mr. Brunner. At this time, 2013-2014 Budget Presentation. We would like the board members to come down to the seat, please.
Good night, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Thanks for coming out to the 2013-2014 Budget Presentation. I am Nancy Ward, I'm the Superintendent, and Joanne Augustine is the Business Administrator. We're going to show the public this evening what is included in the budget for the next school year. At the end, we will be happy to take any of your questions. If you have anything that's burning in the middle of it, raise your hand and we'll call on you to give you a chance to talk then too. So, in Runnymede, we certainly take pride in our school atmosphere. We have small schools that are supportive and welcoming with a sense of community and teamwork, and I think everybody can definitely agree upon those things. The children are always nurtured to do their best, and the programs and interventions are out there for all of our learners, and every year that grows and gets to be stronger and stronger. We also have demonstrated that our students are well-prepared for success in high school, and our students typically do very well when they go on to training, or some of them may even choose some private schools as well. Our discipline problems are in low incidence as well. We handle everything, we're very hands-on, and we do a lot of proactive work with our children. We also are promoting 21st century learning. We've infused a tremendous amount of technology within the last few years. I actually just received some thank-you notes from the second graders today, all of them noting how excited they are to be working with iPad this year. So here are the educational priorities. We always look at the educational plan of the school district, then determine what the cost of the plan is and what the resources are to fund the plan. Also then, we look at what the constraints are to implementing the educational plan. Here are the priorities. The students always are the top priority, and most important are that students are the most important and that their health and safety come first, that they are prepared for high school, and that we have ample instructional materials to support the program. The staff, every teacher must be highly qualified, and all of ours are. The staff-student ratio promotes effective instruction. We don't have any overloaded classes. Some of our classes could be a little bit smaller, but none of them are really all that large. Our teachers are attentive and responsive, all of our staff. We have conscious teachers. We also have a number of support people in our district, student support people, counselors, nurses. We also are, the staff is also excellent with communicating with families and residents. The other priority is for residents. They want to know that Runnymede School District offers quality education, that the schools are safe and effective, and that they get a good value and that their tax impact is well-spent. They also want to ensure that the schools are succeeding because that helps their real estate down. So here's how we develop the budget. It begins at the building level with the teachers and the principals. The principals present to the teachers what they, and ask the teachers to provide for them what they will need each year. It's reviewed by our Business Administrator and I. The Business Administrator constructs the budget and determines the financial impact. So while our teachers may want a certain amount, they can't always get all of that because it may exceed what we can raise in tax levy and what our state aid has given us. This year, we did pretty well. We did not have to turn back very much at all. Everyone pretty much got everything they asked for, and then we refined the budget to fit the mandated parameters. Here's the timeline. We take a look, we start doing that budget development in November and December, but we don't really know what our state aid is going to be until February. The governor delivers a budget message on February 26th, and at that point, we see if we can get some clues about what our state aid is going to look like. But we don't know for sure for about 48 hours until the governor gives us the figures, and this year it was February 28th. So it's good that we do a lot of preliminary work because we have a very tight turnaround. The Runnymede Board of Education approved the budget on March 6th because that was the last date before it would be submitted to the County Office of Education on March 7th. And all the approvals had to take place before last Thursday, the 21st, and this is the night that the Board will approve the final budget, and that's the budget that will be used and has already been approved by the Department of Education. So you can see that it juddles back and forth between our formation of the budget, our Board approving the budget to be submitted to the county, then the county approving it, and then the Board approving the final budget in case there are any changes that go back and forth. This year, we had very, very minimal change. So what do we consider? We first look at school and district educational goals. We pay attention to community support and feedback. We certainly look at our enrollment. Is it increasing, is it declining? You'll see some slides as to what is happening there. Anticipated revenue, how are we doing on the revenue side? Mandated regulations, what new kinds of things are going to be expected of us from the Department of Education, and with that, what is it going to cost? So the goals that were addressed in the 13-14 budget are to improve instruction by implementing a teacher evaluation system that provides focus and specific feedback and opportunities for teacher reflection and growth. That comes right out of the new laws regarding teacher evaluation and teacher tenure reform. We are required to do this. We also have to provide an assessment to measure student growth that is used for formative as well as student assessments. Part of our teacher evaluation system is now going to be to evaluate student growth. For grades four through eight, those teachers will be assessed if they're in tested grades in subject areas, they will be assessed with the state assessment. But we also have to develop student growth objectives and student objectives that we can measure for the purpose of evaluating our teachers. To ensure ample budgetary support for implementing the Common Core State Standards and the teacher evaluation system. So the Common Core State Standards are also relatively new. We've had to develop a completely new curriculum, new curricula throughout the district that complies with the Common Core State Standards. New Jersey is one of 44 states that has adopted common standards that are now national. So Runnymede has to comply with New Jersey's regulations regarding those standards. And to ensure the development of specific measurable time-bound goals that address performance targets of English Language Arts, we used to call it Language Arts Literacy, if any of you are familiar with that and receiving information on your New Jersey ASK test, the Common Core State Standards, we now call it ELA, and Special Education Math, grades six through eight. Those are the areas that we need to improve in. So let's take a look at enrollment. The Runnymede School District enrollment remains stable at about 870 students. School Choice has accounted for four students in 1213, and will grow to seven or eight students in 1314. Turns out it's a good source of funding. When you see the funding slide, you'll get to see the difference that School Choice funding has made in this new funding year 1314. The challenges are always are to enhance the instructional program and bandwidth approved to work well for students, meet our contractual obligations with our staff, address facilities, technology repair and upgrades, and comply with mandates. Last year, we began with the new harassment intimidation and bullying law, and we've had to do some things to tweak that. I hear character education kinds of things that are happening all through our schools being guided by Mrs. Callahan and Mrs. Vega. They do a lot of things like that. The new teacher evaluation model, we've had to spend some money on that. That's a mandate that we've had, there's been an expense for. And in 1415, the New Jersey ASK will go away, and there will be a brand-new assessment called PARCC. So that's, they're telling us that that is a web-based evaluation assessment for students to get on, so we need to make sure we have enough bandwidth, and we need to make sure we have enough computers for every student to be able to take the test on some kind of a computing device, and that we, our internet access is good and can handle this. And of course, we need to do all of those things and stay within the 2% cap on the tax levy. The reason why you don't vote on the budget anymore as members of the community is because the Runnymede Board of Education has agreed to never go above 2% cap on the tax levy. So here are some things that the proposed budget includes. Maintaining our current class sizes and programs, maintaining nurse and guidance services in all the buildings, there will be no loss of any of these positions, maintaining our co-curricular programs, and I say that because a few years ago, we took a real hit from the state, and we were not able to provide everything that we always had. We got nervous that we might have to cut some of those things. Adding new technology at all schools. By the end of this year, we will have some sort of an interactive whiteboard in every single instructional classroom. Facilities upgrades as well, and you'll see a little bit more about that in a minute. Some safety and security upgrades. We've taken a very close look at our security, our security cameras. In this building, actually, we're purchasing a new PA system to make sure that we can call every room and that every room can call back to us. We did that two years ago at Bingham and Downing Schools. It's time for Vols to do the same thing because the one here and at the Vols School is very outdated and needs to be replaced. There's also going to be a new position added. You heard me talk a lot about new teacher evaluation system, Common Core State Standards. A whole lot of things are happening in every school district, and we need someone to do student data collection. We need someone to support the implementation of the standards and someone to assist with the new teacher evaluation system. So this Board has been able to add to this budget a new supervisor of curriculum instruction. Additionally, there will be efficient air conditioning at Bingham and Downing Schools. We did, our maintenance supervisor, Mr. Brunner, has worked diligently to find an affordable option for Bingham and Downing Schools, something that we actually could afford without having to go out for an additional expense, a bond referendum for taxpayers. So this is an initiative that will take place during the 1314 school year. Upgrading the electrical service at Downing. For those of you who've been watching, talking about all of these things for a number of years, you know that Downing School's electrical service is that of a residence as opposed to that of a facility. So there's no way you can add anything to Downing School without first upgrading the electrical service, and that would be a very nice thing. You know, you can't plug in the toaster and have something running at the same time. So this is something that's been very important in the wings for a while. Ms. Augustine has been doing a wonderful job of ensuring that we put some money into our capital reserve so that these kinds of things can actually be purchased. We have to finish the replacement of stairway doors with fireproof doors. The Fire Marshal has been tagging that in many districts, especially with schools at the age of ours, that they need to be replaced with fireproof doors. And some exterior repairs to Bingham and Downing, their old schools, but if they get some pointing, which is the mortar work for the outside of the brick, they will be just about as good as new. Bricks last a long time. And the other thing that's going to happen is that our architect has developed a plan for renovating the old Home Economics Room into a kitchen. So the Runnymede School District will have a kitchen, which is wonderful. It means that we will no longer have to saddle in our meals from another school district. We will be able to cook meals here. So does anybody, I'm going to actually hand off, I'm actually going to hand off to Ms. Augustine. Does anybody have any questions before the handoff? Good news, right? I see a lot of smiles. I know when we started talking about, "We think we can do this," it was very exciting. And this is my last Board meeting, actually, this is my last week here, so I'm pretty excited then. I can say that when I'm leaving, that really great things are happening in my dust that I'll leave behind. All right, here you go, Joanne.
Actually, if I just, can you hear me? On February 28th, we were notified that our total state aid was increased by $18,003. And actually, $17,507 of that was really attributable to the increase in our school choice aid. And as Dr. Ward said, we're going to get an increase in students that are taking advantage of our choice program. The other 496 actually came under this new category of other aid, 1,200 out of the 6, so another $496. So really, the rest of the aid had a realigned and re-categorized and stayed the same. It was flat funding. The total amount of, and that's what I just mentioned. It would have been nice to see a bigger amount than the $18,000, but of course, when in hindsight you look at the state of affairs in New Jersey and what Hurricane Sandy has done to Art Economics, I'm thrilled that we didn't get a cut, so I'm happy that it was flat, plus a little bit of addition to the choice aid. And the stabilized aid along with the other revenue from our fund balance and the tax levy will enable us to maintain our programs, address our facility needs of our aid facilities, meet the contractual obligations, as well as all the other operating demands of our district. And Dr. Ward already highlighted those two items. The pie chart depicts the breakdown of the revenue by percentage. The total budget for 1314 is $16,689,138, which is comprised of two separate and distinct parts. The first is your general fund, which is your local tax levy, state aid, interesting fund balance, which is our surplus that we put back into the budget, and miscellaneous revenue. The local tax levy percentage for 1314 is 52.5% is shown there, and that's actually down from 53% last year. The special revenue amount represents federal and state grants and entitlements. This includes your Title I, 2A, basic skills and NCLB, IDEA, basic and preschool, and the non-public programs. The estimated revenue from the grants and entitlements is actually down from last year because the county suggested that we only budget 75% of our current awards for this year. We no longer have the debt service aid that we had in previous years because of bond referendum that had been passed back in 1997, actually was a blow-off last year. Budgets are financial plans that are based on estimates of future costs. The next two slides will illustrate how dollars spent categorically first by program and then by function. This bar chart represents the cost by program. Programs and projects or activities that are designed to accomplish an objective or set of objectives. The largest portion of the dollar, 27 cents, on that bar chart, is spent on our regular program, which includes instructional costs, all direct classroom instructional costs such as teacher salaries, aides, and other instructional staff, extra supplies, equipment, et cetera. Although it looks as though there's two categories in Europe, which was the non-instructional services and activities, it's just that it's less than that. Budgets are financial plans that are based on estimated with the estimates of future costs. The next two slides will illustrate how the dollars spent. The function describes the activity for which a service or material object is acquired. Functions consist of activities which have the same general operational activities. Furthermore, the categories of activities comprising each of these divisions are rooted according to the principle that those activities should be combined with or compared to. The biggest portion of any school district budget is the salaries and benefits cost. So you see, that's the large 27 cents of all. This analysis categorizes the cost by the Department of Ed's expenditure classifications. The functions of a district are classified into five broad areas, which are instruction, support services, operation of non-instructional services, facilities, acquisition and construction, and other outlets. And then those functions are even further broken into some functions and service areas that you can see all around that pie chart. And again, the biggest highlights are your regular education and the benefits. Tax impact. What is the tax impact? A year-to-year comparison is difficult due to the recent reassessment in Barrow. So due to the reevaluation, the total ratable base increase, and this increase in the assessed values results in a decrease in the tax rate that's caused to the new assessed values. The school tax rate for 1314 will be $1.721, or $100 of assessed value. That rate is actually 22 cents less than last year's rate of 1.945. The new average assessed value of a home in Runnymede is now $147,018, compared to last year's $99,241. So due to these changes in the assessed values, you'll have to calculate your individual tax impact by buying your home's new assessed value by 100 and multiplying it by the 1.721, and then compare that number against your total state impact from last year. But I can tell you, had things date status quo, there was no reassessment done, and I would have been able to say from one year to the next, the increase would have been approximately 1 cent. And that would have, for an average home for last year of $99,241, that would have represented only an approximately $10 increase for the year. But because of this reevaluation, I can't simply say that to all of you. And Board approved a resolution back in January of 2012 to establish the election of members of the Runnymede Board of Ed as the first Tuesday after the first Monday of November, which is your general election. And that began in November of 2012, this past November, and it will remain in effect through November of 2015. So to summarize, our budget contains no program cuts. The FTE scenario stands for full-time equipment, such as what Dr. Ward had mentioned about the curriculum instruction addition, as well as we have an increase in an aid for special education and an adjustment in some of the time for administration and support staff. So that must make up the 2.33 with it. And then all the other things that are mentioned there before, our facility needs. I was kind of thrilled, I was helping everybody else with the fact that we can do these things without going out for a separate bond referendum by putting money into our capital reserve. One of the items on the agenda will also be a separate resolution that says that we're including in this budget, we're going to withdraw $225,000 from capital reserve in order to help do all these things, maintain our buildings, and get these things accomplished. And again, our total tax levy increase was 1.97%, which is below the 2% cap that we're going to need to do. And the layer cited is a decrease in the school tax rate, but the impact individually, you're going to have to calculate based on the reassessed values. And of course, schools help to find our good communities. Runnymede residents take pride in our schools and community. Our user-friendly version of the budget will be posted on our website tomorrow, and the Board of Education and our staff thank you for your support. Any questions about the budget? It is, we're working on getting it up tomorrow morning along with the user-friendly budget. This presentation will be posted on our website under Business Office Budget Page, I believe.
I do have one question. The kitchen, when are they going to be doing that, in the summer? Do you want to be ready for next year or fall yet?
I am down. My goal is definitely have it up and running by the 14-15 year.
Okay, so we'll still need one more year in future, sir. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much for going to the Runnymede. At this time, we'd like to ask if there is any public comment on budget presentation? Or any questions? Under Finance, number three, please make motions to the 2013-2014 Budget. This is made by Maria, set by John. Whereas the Runnymede Board of Education has developed its 2013-2014 School Budget, and whereas a budget hearing was held on March 27, 2013, whereas NJAC 6-19-7.7A required the Runnymede Board of Education to adopt and submit a formal Board motion. Now, the report is resolved that the Runnymede Board of Education hereby approves the 2013-14 School Budget as presented by the administration, which includes the following. Resolve that the Runnymede Board of Education requests the approval of a capital reserve draw in the amount of $225,000. The district intends to utilize these funds for capital projects at A-line Kingdom School, Grace Downing School, and Mary Bulb School. The total expenditure is $6,630,000 because tax has to be raised, that tax is to be raised. So the total expenditure is $12,689,138. Borough Hall? Less the anticipated revenue is $6,59,138, so the taxes to be raised is $6,630,000. I'm sorry, thank you. Patricia Derris?
Yeah.
Amy Beatty?
Yeah.
Charles Mottine?
Yes.
Naomi Davidson?
Yes.
Maria Panzarella?
Yes.
Patricia Smith?
Yes.
And John Ward?
Yeah.
Motion to carry. Do you need a motion to adjourn the public portion of this meeting? motion by John?
motion by John, seconded by Patty Dair. All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. And now we're going to move on to our regular session.